...dollar encumbrance at the library. Any questions or comments? I know we've talked about this in detail with the library.
No.
You're good.
Pretty detailed.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the requested encumbrance for the abatement at the library for $9,020.
Second.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Next up, we have an encumbrance request again discussed at our last meeting. This is a contract for paving. The encumbrance total is $23,630 for paving that will get done next year. Encumbering funds in this year to clean that. Any other questions or comments about that?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the encumbrance for the paving for $23,630.
Sure.
Second by Hope. All in favor?
Aye.
So the third encumbrance is dealing with through the, this is what the police chief discussed at our last meeting, which is, and I, you guys should have in front of you, I think, the invoice and CCS information. So, we're looking to migrate our email from a POP server to a Microsoft Exchange, Microsoft 365 Exchange email for some of the critical positions in town. So the Exchange Plan One, which is the cheapest, is about 15 people. That would most likely include us, as well as some other board members on some of the other boards or commissions who regularly use town email as their primary email. Now, obviously, and we discussed this before, I don't think, I don't think we're going to require people to migrate their town emails, especially as this is going to just increase costs with respect to the town and if they're not really using a whole lot of town business, I don't think there's any reason to require them to do that. There's still going to be open for discovery and sunshine laws, but I don't, I don't think that's necessary. The premium annual, about 11 of those is for the police department?
Aye, it fluctuates between 911.
Yep, and three of those are assigned for the town offices.
Correct.
Now, looking at the plans, I don't think the town offices really need the business premium. Can probably get away with business standard for them. Saves us about $360 a year. Right, it's $10 on, yeah, about $360. We can always upgrade if we find it necessary.
Do you ever give me business standard?
Yeah, actually, to be honest, I think they can go to business basic. They don't need desktop versions of the Office apps because we get that through other things. They already have desktop versions of the apps, so we don't need, we can go to business basic actually, saving 20 times 12, 240 times 3, $750.
So, just a question on the apps then, real quick. So I know Office, you've got the 365, do you get the regular updates so that everybody's on the same version of Microsoft Word, Excel, and everything else as that currently what we have?
You guys currently have Office.
Provide this.
We do have Office.
What's that?
We do have Office.
Yeah, they currently have Office.
Right, is it the 365 or it's a yearly charge and then you get the way this?
Yes, he does that.
Okay.
They get that already through CCS and our services at CCS.
Yeah, so then we know.
Right, and so we can go, we can do the three of them on the business basic, which allow, you know, it gives them a little bit more. Most people just need the Outlook mail logs, but the police obviously need some of the other things like email encryption, given the sensitivity of information that they have. So if we leave, you call out 11 subscriptions on the business preview for the encryption for the police department, we'll put the three town officers, office users on the business basic, and then everybody else will use the 515 on basically as an email mail logs. But they'll all be on Exchange, we get rid of the POP, we migrate everybody over, it should fix a lot of problems that we have with our email servers.
So what's in the bottom line number?
Take 750 off of that number. So the 2900 is a one-time fee, right, the migration fee? So let's do 9,302 minus the 2900. So we have a 642 minus 750. We have basically 5652 of recurring cost on a annualized basis with the 2900, which would be the one-time fee. So with this, I would suggest, so the, 5652 plus 2900?
Eighty-five fifty-two.
Yep, eighty-five fifty-two. So with that, unless you guys have more questions or comments, I would recommend that we encumber the eighty-five fifty-two so that from this year's budget, they can start the migration, do all of that. It may start in January, plug in invoice till end of January, but we can do it basically under this year's budget numbers. And then we'll have to account for the 5652 on an ongoing basis going forward.
Just for the record, I've stated it's essential with the police department's issues they have with their software and their email, that this will preclude that and stop a lot of that messaging breakdown that they have when the services are essential and we get through.
Yep.
So it's, I think it's proven on our part to approve this expense.
So how many people does that mean on Plan One?
There's still 15 on Plan One.
Fifteen?
Yep. Now, if we have to add more people, we can add more people, but you're obviously coming in 13.
Yep.
So it shouldn't be a budget buster to that extent.
Fair enough.
We may not end up with 15 people. You know, it's, the three of us will be in Plan One. If we feel a need to migrate up at a certain point, we can migrate up, but I think initially this is probably the best way to look.
I'm thinking, you know, at minimum, chairs of each community should have, should have that, right, if they're going to be the ones handling the town business.
Yep. I mean, you know, it'd probably be less than 15 if we did that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to encumber the eighty-five fifty-two and to start the police department to work towards the migration of the emails.
Sure.
Second by Hope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, thank you very much for the three encumbrances. I haven't heard of any other requests from encumbrance. I don't know, before we name the topic, have you got, anybody reached out to you about encumbering any funds?
No.
Great, okay, good. All right. Grant application authorization, let me go to authorization of bond legal content first. So I provided you the letter from Divine Mill Met. So the Trust for Public Land reached out to Divine Mill Met, who represented the town when they did the bond on the green light years and years ago. Divine Mill Met reached out to me seeking the ability to have a conversation with Trust for Public Land about the bond, which we granted. This would be a formal engagement letter by Divine Mill Met to represent the town should we go forward and issue bonds for them. Now, I'll just point out on the third page is the fees.
This is a solicitation on your part.
From Divine Mill Met, yes, and I mean, the good thing about Divine Mill Met is?
They're well-known.
They're well-known, they know the town, they've done this before for the town, they have the materials associated with the part of bond, so it's, their fees are $5,500 to $8,000 depending upon, you know, the work involved. They mentioned bond anticipation notes, I don't anticipate that we'll do any bond anticipation notes. We'd do a straight bond if we're going to do it.
Have we seen the, it's dated since the, we've seen this before.
It just came, it came into me via email, and so I'm circulating it now to you guys. You guys want to take a look at it? I mean, the sooner we do this, the, you know, ahead of the game, we're going to be able to work.
I would like to proffer that with my schedule issued, Transpire Previews, I'm not going to be available next week. Now, change in those controlling factors, I am available this week. I would like to have the opportunity to have a longer look at this.
Sure.
And slide this to next week for the schedule.
We can do that?
One way.
Great. All right. 2911.
That's a big.
Yep.
2911 is where we have had some clear-cutting vows of purpose edge. We agreed last time to send the landlord record letter, noticing him that we were going to be able to take a look at that, and the gentleman has responded the most amenable and receptive to input from myself and from Mike Cuomo in regards to issues that were raised on that. Mike Cuomo works for the Rockingham Common Conservation District, it's about 25 hours for his time.
A hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, a hundred twenty-five hours. For his time to come down and eyeball, assess it, and come over the resolution plan. So we need to get the approval from the board and move forward on that contractual aspect. Here's a copy of documents sent by the RCCD to take a look at. I also, in that term, since we talked about it last time, we didn't draft a letter from Mr. Marshall, I have not forwarded to him yet until we approve this, and we'll find him that it will be $1,300, a hundred and twenty-five hour, and that he will be responsible for that in addition to any other fees and expenses that we store properly to the requirements for, or the commonwealth is interested in this.
Does the RCCD estimate how much time it can spend?
No.
Mike said he can't do that until he gets eyeballs on it.
Okay.
And it seems where we're at on this situation.
Can't imagine it's going to be long.
I think it's pretty straightforward. The second point I referenced is that the landlord has been extremely confident acknowledging his engagement in the process and all the dabbling he's done and wanting to get a squared landmaker right.
Okay.
So I don't expect it to be a huge head-buddy contest or battle anyway, shoot and draw.
Okay. Questions, Mike? All right. I'll make a motion to authorize Hovey to sign the contract on behalf of the town to engage, RCCD for the services as indicated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, perfect.
I'll take care of that until this week.
Excellent. Turkey Trot. Just a notice, we received a letter from Bill Johnson recognizing the police department and their support for the Turkey Trot. It was a great Thanksgiving, no incidents, no problems, I take it. Anyway, I just want to acknowledge the receipt and thank Bill for his letter about the police department on for the Turkey Trot. I also want to just take some time to acknowledge that we've received a variety of emails and I believe a couple of phone calls regarding the rug property and the support of the town acquiring rug property. Just want to make sure people know that we are getting those in. I don't know if you guys have any comments about that right now. ZDA notice, so we received a notice of decision from the ZDA. The ZDA held a meeting last week on approval for variances for a three-hilt map to allow the construction of a ADU at that location. This board is, this just notice providing information about what the board did and the variances that they provided to allow the construction of that. Any questions or comments? Grant application authorization, so let me get back to this. So we have a application that the Trust for Public Land is preparing that requires submission December 15th, the end of this week. That application, as part of that application, we need to authorize, presumably me because I've been working with the Trust for Public Land, an authority of the town, somebody on this board to act on behalf of the town for the grant application. We need to formalize that. So, and we need, obviously, minutes will reflect that, and that will be evidence that the board has authorized somebody to act on behalf of the town.
Okay.
So that's what this authorization request addresses. This is the $500,000 clean water grant that will be applied for December. So questions that you guys might have about grant authorization?
Pretty sure you're bored.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that you're responsible for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Hovey, I'll second that, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. I'll work with Lynette on getting that. Now, on that subject, something came up at 3 o'clock this afternoon, 3:30 this afternoon. So as part of that application, Lynette discussing with the state agencies who are dealing with clean water grants, and this is a $500,000 grant, who've been, I've been working with her to prepare the materials, everything else. The state, in their preliminary review of our grant application, said, "We're good. Everything, from a preliminary standpoint, you're qualified to apply for this grant formally, you can go through the process." Apparently, they indicated to her today, and I think Jeffrey won the email today, they're now requiring the town, which owns 41 acres, when you go, you know where Connor Lane is, in Deer Trees, we have the small parking lot, okay? That first parcel that you walk through, that 41-acre parcel there, right about Deer Trees, is actually owned by the town. It's 41 acres owned by the town.
That little town forest.
Yeah, it's called, it's referred to as the inland acres.
The others.
The town owns that land. Exactly when the town acquired it, I think it might have been as early as 1963 from the Kimbels, if I recall this. I looked up the book and page under the tax card, I think it was 1963 to Rixley. There's no current encumbrances on that, there was no deed restrictions on it, I think they basically granted it to the town. The state, though, in order for us to move forward with this application, at the last minute now, is requiring the town to basically put encumbrances on that parcel of land. Now, our options are to do that or not at this meeting, because the application is due the 15th. If we don't do that, then in effect, we won't move forward with the application in any other way. So I, I'm raising this to you, it is last minute, I was not planning on discussing this tonight, it came up today. I have my personal opinion, and I have serious concerns about the town and this board encumbering a property like this without having any discussion before the town about this, or having any kind of public hearing, because what we're in effect doing is changing town property unilaterally by this board without any input, that the town's been informed that we're going to take input about it.
Okay.
That being said, I think it's important that we discuss this tonight, take whatever input we can about this.
Clarify the idea for me, because I think I.
Where is it? So, so here, here's Deer Trees.
Yep.
And Connor Lane.
Yep.
Is here.
And it's right there.
The parking lot, it's basically this square, 41-acre square, it abuts the rug property. So people access the rug property, and if, from that, from the Connor property, they can access it from the Oaklands, and I think this went out on Watson Ave in Exeter, they can access the trails.
And if you look at the handouts that have been, both way around, you can see where that parcel is.
Yeah.
You saw it.
Mm-hmm.
I can't get an issue with getting this dropped in the last second, and not having an opportunity to wonder, research, or to discuss it, and three, making a determined decision about it. You can go on good faith, but I mean, it just doesn't give you a warm fuzz.
I'm sure, Mike, any comments?
I kind of agree with Hovey on that, and I agree mostly, largely, with what he said about the town having a say in this board acting, you know, in a way that doesn't include any input.
How is it? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's from the town, that's all I was going to say.
How is it that this year just shows up today? I mean, is this the state?
Lynette informed us as soon as the state came out and then informed her.
So how long?
It's not like Lynette.
Oh, no, I'm not saying it's Lynette.
No, 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 they, this is the state, they gave us preliminary green light, and then today, they said, "Oh, wait a minute."
It's actually not listed, it's not listed in any written requirements for application, for the grant.
Unfortunately, they're saying that without the approval of the town, they're, it sounded to me that they were going to be reluctant to move forward with our grant application if we don't do this.
Or?
Bill, please weigh in, because I.
So I'm trying to sort through this at the same time. There's, there are two different ways of applying to this grant. I'm not going to get into the particulars, but the way that we would be applying to the grant that we have the best chance of receiving, the encumbrance is required.
It's a trigger that's required.
Yeah.
And?
Did we know this before, did?
We found out today.
So we, that's what I'm telling you, but I mean, did we know there was two paths to apply for this?
We, we knew, and we have also been aware all along that this was essentially our only route. I think right from a jump, we knew that this was a complicated grant.
But they didn't indicate that the encumbrance was required until today.
No, so this is just one of the attorneys in your office that came up with this, or is this, is this code?
This is, this is somebody in the clean water grant program.
State or federal?
State.
State. State representation for a federal grant.
The state's interpretation of the federal?
Right, that's how I.
Administrative rule.
Yeah. And I, I was on the sidewalk with a representative today from the LWCCF, and that was almost conveyed to me.
Oh, they conveyed to you on the sidewalk today?
He, he, well.
I'm sure they communicated with Lynette as well, right?
Maybe by about 30 minutes.
Yeah, exactly, okay. But it was this afternoon.
We found out.
So Mike, when you go explain, just for the viewing public, the impact and the implications of the result of encumbering this land to the town and the population.
Well, so the encumbrance itself would basically impose restrictions that don't exist on the land that the town currently owns. At least, there's.
To just kind of like soften and blow.
I guess Jeff, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I mean, if there's folks in the home, what are they talking about?
Like, I mean, I could say that myself all afternoon.
Yeah.
So, I mean, one way of looking at it is that the encumbrances are simply supporting the intent of creating a town forest, basically saying that it's already made a town forest in perpetuity.
This speaks to the specific.
This encumbrance that we're speaking to, yes, just this 41 acres.
What about the documents that created this in the first place? Don't they set it up for perpetuity?
No.
I have no idea.
So, so when you look.
That's our, that's our.
Yeah, so.
I think this today, and you're expected to go.
No, 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 no. So let me, let me explain. So when this hit this afternoon, first thing I did is like, oh, okay, we, I got to find out more information about this. So when you look up the tax card itself, it gives a book and page as to when the town got it. It doesn't indicate on the tax card when the sale took place. I looked up the book and page at Rockingham deeds, and so, take this with a grain of salt, I haven't been able to really deeply dive in it, but when you go to that book and page, there was a simple transfer for basically nothing from the Kimball family, which owned, you know, tons of land in Exeter, New Fields, and all over the place. They granted this particular parcel to the town of New Fields in 1963, and it was without any conditions. I think the town basically sat on it forever. There wasn't any formal designation of it, it wasn't made any kind of a town for, there was no declaration, the town just owned the parcel, like we own, you know, a variety of parcels around town that came into. Deer Trees, which was built in the, uh.
Late 80s.
Yeah, late 80s, early 90s, is when, late 80s, mid 90s? When Deer Trees was built. Maybe 95, I think 95. That's when the access to this parcel became available. And so at that point in time, people basically were starting to utilize it, and that's when, you know, some of the trails were made, and basically when that started to be utilized. But there was still no change in the deeds or the required easements or anything like this. It remains a basically a town-owned property without restrictions on it, as far as I can tell. I don't think there's an iota of restrictions in terms of the value of that property. So the town could dispose of it, we could sell it to a developer if we wanted to, we could sell it. The town can do anything with, with, it wants with it right now, in that sense. It's an asset at the town, it really is. The, the point here is that, you know, the encumbrances would basically, to, to just point, steer this towards the decision that the town is going to turn this into a town forest.
Into a town.
Into basically a town forest. There's nothing like that right now, but that in essence is what an encumbrance like this would do. And obviously, it's related to the rug situation because the trails, this is, you know, direct access with respect to the rug property, people utilize it now. Obviously, if we acquire the rug property, this would become interconnected and become a bigger part of it.
So I have a question about the grant.
Yes.
When we were talking about, the last meeting, we had Lynette come in there, talk about another grant that we weren't approved for, but we're going to resubmit.
Correct.
Next year, is there an opportunity to resubmit for this grant, or is this a one-shot?
I get the sense that this is a one-shot.
Okay. So if we try to go for this at later date, we're probably not going to be successful.
But that's not the figure.
I don't want to answer that question myself.
Well, I don't really concern you here, I don't, I am not necessarily opposed to the process in doing that, but to sit here and have to start my lab at, what, 19:30, 7:30 PM and go, "We need to make a decision to encumber a piece of property and generally direct, which way this is going to affect the input of the community," I do not think is a reasonable and appropriate course of action or way I would report. Now, for those of us who can throw around 500K, which is a big, that's a lot of money and that's a lot of coin, but is it appropriate for us to make a decision like this on the support of it without the input from the citizenry? I don't, boy, that, that, that does not feel right.
Now, like I said, I agree, that's why I'm asking if there's another shot, you get another shot at the, at the grant.
And if we don't get it, then are there other grants that might appear and that might be available? You know, it is, it's kind of like you get men on a barrel.
Yeah, I mean.
You understand what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I do, but I also feel, I mean, there are plenty of big ones that hit and can fit this project. Is there one that fits right in? I don't know the answer to that. I'm trying to think of answers.
No, no, I guess, and we may not have the answer before the end of this discussion. Totally understand.
And again, I'm not opposed to the concept of moving forward and designating certain encumbrances, but I don't, I mean, I don't feel.
Well, actually, Hovey, I mean, to some extent, and again, that's a, I mean, this does raise the question of, if the town moves forward and encumbrances this property in perpetuity, it's town forest, which is what the requirement is, and then we don't, you know, let's say the town votes down the acquisition of the rug property. the town votes down the acquisition of the rug property. What'd we just do?
Just create a town forest.
Yeah, but we did, I, I did, but I, I devalued an asset to the town without actually having input from the town. We did it under the anticipation that, you know, this would be part of a bigger thing, but now it's not going to be part of a bigger thing.
It's gonna be going forward.
I, I, I have a real hard time as a fiduciary of this town, kind of justifying that in my mind. Trust me, I, I get it, and I, this is not your guy's fault, but, I mean, the timing of this couldn't be worse. I guess it, it could have occurred Thursday, but anyways, yes, I'm, I'm gonna open to the public.
So, I work for the federal government, so I have a lot of experience with applying for programs and bureaucracy. If this actual encumbrance part was not listed as a requirement, then that generally means it's a preference. What's stopping the town from applying for it anyways, when they come back and say, well, this disqualifies you, there might be a waiver or exception or something like that, so it may not be worth putting the encumbrance on, but it might be worth still applying, applying to the loophole to that, because if that's not a concrete requirement listed in the public documentation for applying for it, then it's not solid, since there was a waiver of it.
Do we know of the grant process, if there's a question variance process?
Well, let me just, I'll quote from the email, which is, we recently learned from Bill Gage at LWCF, that in order to be eligible for a, quote, "acquisition project submission", we need to include the inlet acres as part of the project boundary, which means that we would need to be encumbered with deed restrictions along with the rug property requirement. Let me ask this question. I, I don't expect you to have the answer to this. Are they saying that we need to do this now, or is it one where, if we receive the grant, it would be conditioned upon the town actually encumbering those acres? In other words-
It's worth preparing.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, I get it, can we still go through the application process, and if we receive the award, then we'll, we'll directly address the encumbrance, and basically saying, do we want the $500,000 or not, as, as this? I don't know that you know the answer to that.
And I, I share the sentiment of, I mean, we're essentially complete with, we're essentially complete with the application. I, I mean, I'd rather pass a homework that's a little bit incomplete than ask for forgiveness or an explanation maybe down the road. Yet, because maybe there is more to this conversation on that end, not just in terms-
Yep.
And the, and the problem with a late delivery like this is, there's all kinds of nuance that's floating around this, in the shadows, that unless you have the time to sit down and read this and explore all the documents, you go, oh, we didn't see this, here's just that parcel right there that allows us to do this. And that's why I'm really uncomfortable with moving forward with this now, without having the opportunity to research or pursue things, I'd say to say, because I just don't think it's appropriate to make that kind of determination, the three of us, for the town of 1,700, 1,800 people, without having sufficient knowledge to make an intelligent decision. And it is that I'm opposed to the idea of doing it, but you gotta make your ducks a little before you start spending money, like they're sort of covering in time and property.
All right. I, I, I put it this way, I don't want to have a vote on whether we oppose the encumbrance or not, because I think that might be a very long way if we have a formal vote, because I think the general consensus here is, we're reluctant to do this at this time. I'll reach out to Lynette tomorrow, because it might be worth, actually, me as the chair of the board here, to have a conversation with Gage to say, can we move forward with this with the understanding that we won't be able to receive the grant money unless we encumber? Hopefully, they'll find that as a reasonable compromise, given the timing of all this.
It's worth a shot.
Yeah. I, I don't see how else we move forward. I, again, I, I'm reluctant to take a vote, because I don't think you get the vote.
Yeah, I'd rather that.
Right? So, all right. I'll, do you, I'll talk to Lynette first, and if, if you guys think that I should reach out to Bill and whoever else it is at LWCF, I'll do that. If you guys want to convey that directly, if Lynette wants to convey it directly, then I'll let you read that.
Yeah, it's for strategizing.
Yeah. Great, okay. All right. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, are there any other comments from the general public about this? I just asked them, thank you. Okay. Okay, now the fun stuff. It is budget time. All right, so, we've got a lot of issues to address, to work through the budget, yeah, this is, all right, New Fields budget. All right, so, we're gonna work through line by line here, the budget materials, we discussed a lot of this over the last several months with the various departments. As a board, we have to put together a budget proposal that will go before the town in budget hearing in January. So this is part of that. All right. I'm gonna go line by line, and discussing to these, again, if there are questions, suggestions, the changes, we'll work through them, talk about them, and our role here is tonight, is to come up with a bottom line number, well, the line item by line item, but also bottom line number that we're gonna take into the town. So the first up is the executive line. The executive line is basically town offices, uh, that's the SUE's budget, and includes-
4130.
So, no, then, oh, 4130, through 4130, not, yes. So the proposed budget is $175,824. Any questions about line 4130? No?
Stand by, just a second here.
Yeah, 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 take your time.
The health insurance drop that we had on 2014 was the way we made the decision to increase the deductive, but they uncovered-
Correct, correct. So they're going to a higher deductible, yeah, correct.
Reduction from all its proposed original.
Correct.
And then, then we have these, you know, health insurance down, social security, there's nothing that we can do.
Yeah, there's really not, not much we can do with that line. I mean, for the most part, this is all dictated, for the most part, it's the salary issues. Again, as Sue indicated, the salary increases she's requesting for the employees in the town.
Personal issues.
Yep. But, again, most of this is personal changes.
Yeah. Nothing on 4130 through 4130.
Okay. You good, Mike?
Yes.
Next up, the election line. So, in Susan papers, their, the election line includes vital records, actually, we typically have vital records as a separate line, so let me approach this as not including the vital records fees, which is $1,200.
The statistics fees here?
Yep. And by the statistics fees, we have that as a separate line, I know she throws it in here, but we typically have that as a separate line in the, in the budget itself. So the election line itself would be $14,400.
With four elections this year being that-
Correct, that is the driver. What we typically see is elections, is every other year, this goes up to $10, $12, $14,000. This is a four-election year, because we have a presidential primary this year, in addition to the normal even-year primary in general elections along that.
What was the total, sorry?
$14,400.
Did something change from?
So the vital stats line here, take that out.
All right.
So that's, right, the $1,200, correct. So it's a 14,400, with vital stats, we're just gonna do it as a separate line, we typically do it.
Okay.
Any more questions about that line? No?
No, sir.
Okay, great. So the vital stats line is also $1,200, you guys are good with that, too?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, next is financial administration line. These are the treasurer, the audit expense is the bulk of this, it totals $27,715.
Is that 15K for the audit, is that a precedent if it passed five, seven years or something?
Yes. Our audits have been actually very reasonable, I mean, it moved up, I think, from $14,000 to $15,000 over the last several years, but there's been no substantial jumps for the last several years. We put that up for a contract as well, and so, I think that helps, you know, competition-wise, it helps on, keep the, keep it in line. Any question about $27,715? All right, we're gonna, next up, reval. Everybody loves a reval.
91, 93, which one?
Uh, reval, uh, revaluation, I have here, and again, I apologize, I'm going down the line, line because they typically clear our budget. Reval in line item is 21750. I think this is, this wasn't necessarily in her, but this is, this is basically the contract for, for what, for revaluations. Okay. Any question about, and again-
The tour you just reopened, 20 years.
Yep, and again, it only went up $300 to over.
And what, I have the number, what's it over?
21450 last year is going to 21750, it's up $300. Good number. Next up is legal, let's skip that for now. Let's go to planning and zoning, line 4191, then 93. The bulk of this is the contract with Glenn Greenwood for planning.
8750.
Yep.
What was the discussion, I think it was when we talked about Susan here-
Yeah, we haven't had a planning meeting since then.
Taking this as a certain RPC involvement or something? Giving them a ride, sure, ready to do this?
Yep. We haven't had a planning meeting to be able to address it before tonight. That planning meeting is next week, actually. Next week?
The fifth?
Well, is it this Thursday?
Second, second Thursday, so it'll be next.
Next, next Thursday, right? Or is it this Thursday?
This Thursday.
This Thursday. This Thursday.
14th.
Yeah. So, again, we have to finalize this by January 9. Our goal here is to basically come up with some hard numbers that we're gonna work with. If at the planning board meeting we come up with a number that's lower than this, we can reincorporate it. Again, I would assume with your agreement, I'd rather get that now. So, the, the number now, right now is 14250.
Would, would-
I presume if the planning board says, yeah, let's do something cheaper and not renew with Glenn Greenwood, we'll do the RPC for a lower number. You guys would be okay with that?
Where are the numbers at?
5050?
Yeah. And who's the alternative?
Uh, Barkham Planning Commission.
Barkham Commission, yeah.
Depending on what their fees.
I can write this, or they could, whatever.
Yeah.
What is, what is Lynn's contract, the end of the year?
It's in the annual, we do an annual contract.
Yep.
So, well, let, let's hold it there, and then obviously, if the planning board has a recommendation to lower that, we'll, we'll incorporate that. All right, general government buildings, the number right now is-
267?
267, yeah, we lowered the oil, but yeah, and, yeah, we should be fine with that.
The, the other part of that, though, is we talked about in the last meeting when we get the library, we talked about moving the maintenance for the library, the lowing and everything.
Into this budget, yeah, and so, we'll, we'll incorporate that, we'll, we'll, what's the library line for France, keeping it home, I think it's separated?
3214.
32, yep.
So that would bump that up 3214, we drop the library down.
Yep, so, 26700, 113214.
2914, 2914?
Yep, 29914.
And that's just basically sheltered down here.
Yeah, it's, it's moving down here, but we'll just keep that as the line item here, so that the library, because it really comes under the, the town, and we just incorporate it over there, so, we'll make the adjustments for libraries. Okay? We good on general government buildings?
Yes, I am.
Of course. Uh, cemeteries, they flatlined by the 31550.
Was that 41, was that?
Again, I, I have the structure that is working through the, how it appears in our MS, 636.
Congratulations, you've been flatlined.
You've been flatlined, actually, for five years, right?
Sure, it was instead.
Uh, insurance, so, the insurance line right now is 33350. But, we received notice that we have a credit for $16,000 in insurance.
From?
Basically, there, there are credits that we have earned over the years, and Primex informed us just last week, that the $16,000 in credits. So, I think what we should, we, we, we could have them reimbursed, or we could actually take the credit and apply it to next year.
Drop since 27350.
Correct, which I would highly recommend, given our current budget.
Also, that's a-
So, we'll, we'll apply those credits to that line, and so, it'll be a final-
So it's basically put the number 47350.
Yep, yep, exactly. All right.
Is that an unusual event to present?
It, it occurs every so often, it's really, you know, in the history of insurance, I couldn't tell you, but we earned credits over the years, and they informed us, we have $16,000 in credits. So we'll apply it to next year, we'll apply it against next year's insurance bills, we won't have to spend that money, we get to lower our budget until we tax people less. Okay? Next line is advertising, 5150, pretty straightforward, same as last year, since the last several years.
And those numbers seem to be, so the proposal of the 23 and 24 is being consistent.
Yep.
And those expanded actuals are right there.
That's why we haven't changed the line, we've been, we've been really consistent, yeah. Any concerns about 5150, we good?
Good.
Okay. All right. Other general governments, so, I'm gonna pull it down. Just to cover what other general governments, I don't search a detailed line. Oh, yeah, here it is, it's right in front of my face, sorry. So, these are mostly our, our computer contracts, avatar contract fees, website fee, document scanning, other professional services, the printing costs for things like the town report, some other general postage, office expenses, under general government. Our number is 3, actually, yeah, our number is, right now, I have a number here, it's 32,000, I'm not exactly sure where I got the number, but I think it's from, our estimates from last year, last year our number was 30,300. Now, this way, the reason I just, I just bumped the number in here, because, so, you guys have been looking at changing the town hall stream, which is in here at 1,800 basic act package. Are you guys looking to increase this number?
Yeah. I think it's, I don't know what we go with. So I talked to them today, and with the budget situation we're in, my primary issue and interest here would be to- and interest here would be to have every town meeting string, whether it's the planning board, the zoning board, or, uh, conservation commission. And it would have been nice to do the upgrade on the equipment to improve the audio. I don't think it's approved at this time, but I would strongly support and move forward to making sure that the meeting is, is visible to the town and that it's recorded and accessible later on. Currently, we're paying eighteen hundred a year, a hundred and fifty a month, and if you go to every meeting being recorded, it's gonna be three K a year. To upgrade it, it would have been once a month, five, fifty-five, hundred, six thousand.
On the equipment side?
Yeah, on the equipment side. So, uh, I, as much as I would like to do that, so we can have this bagged system, I don't think that's appropriate now, but I think it's appropriate that everybody can see and hear what transpires in all meetings and that it's accessible, and I would strongly support doing so. Yeah, I think you can spend the next twelve months looking at options.
On the equipment side?
On, on, on all sides. You can just look for other options. Give us some time.
Well, again, I, I mean, I've been, I've been, uh, I've said this before and I'll say it again, um, I don't like that because it discourages people from actually attending these meetings, and situations like this, again, something comes up, like today, on the inland acres, we'd love to have more people here, get more feedback, and we don't. At this, at home, there's no way for them to provide that feedback, and, um, so, uh, I understand the desire to do this, I think that, um, not having that is more conducive to public participation, um, in the goings ons of not only this, but planning board, zoning board, all, all these, all these issues, so, um, I understand, uh, you know, the desire for this, I think it's a, you know, a weight of scales and I can down opposing that change. You want, you want?
I see it, it's basically, it's gonna be a twelve hundred dollar increase, and yeah, twelve hundred dollars is a lot, but it's bang for the buck, and the ability for people to see what's transpiring, reflecting the times we're in, uh, and I agree with you, in essence, I'd like to have a more full under meeting, but it's not gonna happen this day, if we see this.
No, I understand. So you guys wanna move that to a three thousand dollar line on the town hall stream?
That would be my vote.
Is that what you wanted?
Just keep what we have. Keep the equipment that we have.
Keep the equipment.
Like it, zoning board, planning board, Concom will all be live streamed.
Also be live streamed. But which will require a twelve hundred dollar increase in the line? Okay?
Okay.
We can put it in? Uh, right, um, so, okay, so that line goes to two thousand. Are there other changes, uh, on that line? That you guys feel need? Twelve, ten?
Yep.
Twelve, so the number now is gonna be thirty-three, twelve hundred. Uh, I'm sorry, thirty-three, twelve hundred, thirty-three, two hundred. Thirty-three, two hundred for the other general government, okay? All right, great. Thank you for that. All right, next line, uh, police line. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we did not address the legal, let's go back to legal. Sorry about that. So, uh, legal fees, um, you know, it's the one thing that we've definitely overrun this year. And again, this is due to a variety of issues in town that we've had to address. I don't anticipate that this year will, upcoming year will be anything like twenty-twenty-three, like absolutely, I, I could be wrong. I, I mean, I could be wrong. I mean, clearly, we're gonna have to be more than twelve thousand, we budgeted in the last year. I can, I can tell you what we had budgeted for prior years was, uh, twelve-five, twelve-five, ten, we budgeted twenty thousand, twenty, twenty-one, cook that back to twelve thousand, twenty-twenty-two, we've never overspent our legal line until twenty-twenty. So, uh, there's probably at least to move up. Uh, I don't know what numbers you guys are thinking, but my, my brother says something in the twenty thousand range would probably be prudent.
What do we spend this year?
Thirty-six thousand, but we're not gonna do that next year.
No.
Uh, when, you know, Hazel issue is, is, was tremendous, we were, the Vernon issues with the planning board at the beginning of the year, even Vernon issues, if they come up this year, I don't anticipate will be the extent of the legal, uh, requirements on town council that we had.
And what was our budget for this year?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, how many did thirty-six? Michael, would you say twenty?
I would say twenty.
What's kind of thinking, because you never, I'm, I'm minimal to go with your way.
I'm more than happy to make it lower, um, I, I'm more than happy to make it lower, but I, I think prudent says, you know, we, we need to do something like eighteen, twenty. You wanna do eighteen? Let's do eighteen.
Eighteen.
Great. Thank you? All right, uh, public safety, uh, police line. Um, so we had the extensive discussion on Pete Police budget, that line item is seven-two-four-eight-ninety. Any questions, changes on...
Which is a forty-five K above.
Yep.
Over.
Six point, six point six percent, and again, almost all the change of that has to do with personnel.
Yep.
And it's a recognition that certainly in this area, um, we don't even have twenty-four hour average, but, um, in order to maintain, you know, the personnel that we have, coverage that we have, we gotta maintain the personnel, um, this is recognition that there are, there are towns poaching all over the place right now, um, I know that there's certainly weak statism over our officers, uh, you know, and it's, it's a six point six percent increase in the current environment, I don't see how we, uh, make, you know, any substantial cuts here without, um, impairing our personnel, in my opinion. I don't know what you guys think, but, um...
I clearly concur with that, uh, and like most, you take care of your people and your people take care of you, some of these bumps, such as the, the health insurance one, even though you mitigate it, add to a great degree, it's almost ten thousand dollars right there, and, uh, if you got good people, you keep the good people, you take care of them, I mean, it just hurts, it just, we're just getting jammed, everybody's getting jammed, and all of them are getting jammed here as a town. Yeah, I think we're missing some equipment that we probably would have said. Okay, chief, but I...
And, uh, I, I mean, the one thing, I talked to chief about this was on, on the gasoline line, because gasoline prices have come down, but even, that, it, it, that's being driven by more gallons, not, uh, an expectation of a much higher price, this was priced out at three dollars a gallon, so, again, I, there's just not a lot of over, our dispatch contract is our dispatch contract, um, the equipment leases, the equipment leases, it's, it's personnel, that's what this change in budget for the most part is.
True.
So we leave the seven-two-four-eight ninety at the end?
I'll support that a hundred percent.
Okay, great.
Me too.
Uh, ambulance, fifty-one hundred, that's basically making a contract in Newmarket. Any questions on that?
Jeff, has that been pretty consistent?
Yeah.
On that number?
It's been that way since at least twenty-seven, two.
Yeah, right. Should we expect you to collaborate here or any kind of, so, I, I don't think so, you know, because I think that, most of that, you know, that's, that's kind of a common reserve of something that can't afford an ambulance.
Correct.
You know, and I don't think...
We'd never run that, I don't think we've ever run over the budget one.
Right.
Yeah. All right, we good with that?
Yep.
Uh, fire, uh, fire department budget, submitted by chief, one of the only ones that we reviewed, current line item is, we're basically in a more or less a flat budget, one-seventy-three, five, thirty-eight. Stuff above seven hundred. Oh, I'm sorry, one-seventy-two, eight, twenty-six. Yeah, uh, one, he's dropping by eight, eight hundred and twenty-six. So, um... Yeah, one-seventy-two, eight, twenty-six.
Seven, twelve, we're touching.
Yep.
And we're gonna, we're gonna make the call on the, uh, fire truck the next block, right?
So, yeah, we'll get to the fire truck issues when we talk more on that, so, are we good with that line on the line?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, building inspector, um, this is basically a reflection of the fee paid to Larry Shaw, the savings paid to Larry Shaw. Larry Shaw's total compensation is based upon, uh, building permits, he's compensated as a portion of building permits, this is just the second issue reflecting the building inspector. Any questions about that? Great. Emergency management, uh, fifteen thousand dollars on the line. It was fourteen, seven, I rounded it up to fifteen. Any questions about the emergency management line? Jeff is here too, if anyone wants to ask. This basically covers things like radio or equipments, uh, periodic acquisition of signage, um, some, uh, communication services.
We get reimbursed by the state for these rules that we do, so, uh, you know, usually we've got, we've got money left over. And we've got the refunds that, you know, if we really need money, we can do those. Did I just submit an document on that?
Uh, did you submit? I don't think you submitted.
I did not.
He has said it's the same as last year.
Yes.
This one's pretty, it, again, it's, it's radios, communications equipment, and it's...
It's not, we don't spend a lot of money. You know, we don't, we don't really need days or, you know...
Right, we got rid of cell phones, right?
Exactly.
Because, you know, we were running cell phones on the internet, we got rid of those. Budget, actually, at some point, the budget was like eighteen thousand dollars, but we upgraded some of these things, lowered it down to fifteen thousand dollars.
Yep.
You guys good with the fifteen?
Yep.
And remember, these are fungible not only before we submit to the budget, hearing, we'll discuss it at the budget hearing, but it won't be changed at the budget hearing, we can change it before we get to the budget hearing. Uh, but, uh, where really the opportunity to change, whether from the board or from the general public, is at the deliberative session, which will be in fact. All right, some words to manage, we're good. Uh, streets, uh, Brian Lipstein submitted his budget, um, again, the critical issue here, and the increase from last year, going from three hundred forty thousand last year to four hundred twenty thousand this year, is, uh, uh, we're gonna basically do five, fifty-nine hundred feet of old league reclaiming and pavement, the upper cap of old league. That's just dragging that budget number, so forty, four hundred twenty thousand or something. Any questions about that?
You know, one of the things on this is, we're so far behind on the paving, that, yeah, we're gonna get old league done, but are we doing it? And that's been on the project, and then we've got Pleasant and everything, which is...
Again, they're in the schedule.
We're gonna have a ranch and stuff, we're gonna have a statement, we're gonna get in that, but I, I'm wondering if, are we doing enough to play catch-up on this, or are we just kind of putting a band-aid on this one?
Well, no, I don't think old league's a band-aid, again, I think it's more of...
Well, it's, it's, it's more of twenty years ago, it's more...
We have to, well, we've done a decent job, the, the biggest issue really over the last couple of years, where we've fallen behind in the amount, it's not that we stopped paving, we've fallen behind in the amount that we could pave in a given year, mainly because the prices of asphalt went through the roof.
The pavement's too heavy.
Yeah, exactly. Um, are we like miles behind? No, we're not miles behind, we, we are not. Um, but, as Brian has indicated, there's gonna be some large paving budgets over the next several years. We're gonna have to do a mile a year, basically, for the next several years, which is, you know, it's gonna be a lot more than the two hundred fifty thousand dollars we were doing a few years ago, we're gonna be in the four, four, fifty, five hundred thousand for the next several years. And if we do that, we'll be able to do deer trees, and we'll be able to do, you know, Pleasant is, is gonna be next presumably, depending on when we're gonna be doing the, the water rain, but, you know, that's not a full line, so, you know, in that year, we may be able to get away with less, but when we hit deer trees, you know, we're not gonna do all of deer trees at once, because that's, I think that's close to two miles of road in deer trees, but it will be, you know, we'll do this part, we'll do that part. I think Brian's point is, we need to expect that every year, the number's gonna be bigger than what we had seen the last few years, because we have big roads coming up, due to the fact that we have these neighborhoods coming up, and that's where the big roads are in town. It's the neighborhoods. It is deer trees, we just did Pendleton Meadow, uh, it's deer trees, Partridge Hill, eventually Runaway, Elataba later one, but I think Brian's point is, we don't need to continuously jack up the budget, but our budgets are gonna be in this four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar range for the next several years. Unless, of course, asphalt goes to, you know, the moon, and it's gonna be even more, but that's the reality, and, and, so, I, I think this number's the right number for us, uh, especially as we've also uncovered another twenty-three thousand dollars that is gonna be used for paving next year. So, um, I mean, I think this is the right number, I, I don't think that we need to increase this, but, again, we can have that discussion.
I don't disagree at all with what you're saying there, I just think that we need to be very proactive on this. And like Brian was talking about, repaving the fire department parking lot, the apron right in front, so I looked at it the other day, and I go, there's other places, I think, but that's just my two cents worth, you could probably benefit more from having new asphalt than just a parking lot there, or the apron, but I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get the most bang for our buck, I'm trying to, trying to address this problem. Michael, I think your, your observation is correct, and I agree with it, but I just do not want, and I think we've set the tone, but we've got the cognizance that this is gonna be a kicking butt for the next, next number of years, and we can.
Oh, I, I, I think what's important, especially, again, we've discussed this, Brian has indicated, I think there's a general consensus at this board, that we should expect numbers in the four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar range going forward. I think where it becomes critical, and where we need to do our job, is when it comes to deliberative session, when if somebody says, I think we need to take a hundred thousand dollars out of the paving budget, that's where presumably, I know I will, but I'm presuming, again, you're...
I'm assuming so, I'm sure.
That's where we need to make sure people understand that's not a good course of action, right? Falling behind, we're, we're hitting the point where we need, as a town, to understand we need to commit these monies, and that's where I think it becomes important for us, because, again, I think the way we look at it, Brian's gonna come in and say, yeah, deer trees are gonna be four hundred eighty thousand dollars, we need, you know, I, I need a low budget of four hundred eighty to do a mile on deer trees.
So I think the important part of that, then, going on that thought process, is that we have a proactive educational process for the community, for the town, that this is what we need to do, and to plan on this and expect this over the next five years or six years to ensure that we're brought back up the scale.
Well, and, and again, to Brian's credit, um, over the last several years, in, in talking about the budget, that is what he certainly, he gave plenty of...
Notice.
...lead time of notice, that as we get to the neighborhoods on the plan, that these numbers will get better. You know, last year, the asphalt, again, the asphalt issue and the cost of paving issue for the last two years, setting that aside, I mean, we still were able to get, you know, Sam Orman involved in that, next year's gonna be finishing old league, stuff like that.
Yeah, Jeff. Is David something to take bids out of?
Um, yeah, he manages, he managed the process for taking the bids for, for that.
I, I just want to really, and I think we're critical, to stress that.
Again, I think that, that we really need to stress is that deliberative, when, you know, the, the discussion with the general public, the opportunity to change these lines coming, coming.
And there, there's actually a big variance in, in, in numbers. You all know that? Yeah, no, I mean, that, you know, we're in construction, we've seen just that through the sort of last few years, and all those numbers are coming in pretty tight, so...
Uh, lighting, is the next one? So, uh, I mean, good thing about lighting, it's fifty-five hundred dollars, um, you know, uh, six years ago, this was ten thousand five hundred dollars, and despite the fact that electricity costs have gone up, when we instituted the L E D lighting for our street lighting, these are the savings coming through, um, it was totally worth it for the town, um, you know, it was a, it was a good project that we went forward with, so the number there is fifty-five hundred, unless you guys have a change from me? Okay, um, let's skip sanitation for now, because it's gonna go a long way, I'm gonna jump down to welfare. Welfare line, this is the, uh, welfare assistance for people in need in town, Obie's a welfare officer, um, number's been four thousand for a long time.
It's COVID study, and with an addition to some outside resources that we've been able to tap and some, and at other end, we've been able to meet the needs that presented themselves, and we've been able to be proactive, we're proceeding to meet that, solve the problem, teach people to get in a box, so I think we can manage fine with the number.
Great. Any thoughts, questions? Okay, we'll keep that at four thousand? Uh, culture... Culture, parks and rec. Okay, parks and rec. Parks and rec line is... Twenty six hundred parks and rec. Oh. That is for...
Groundskeeping.
Yeah, I think it's for groundskeeping. Yes, it is, it's groundskeeping, thank you. Line forty five two hundred. Yep, that's groundskeeping. Been twenty six hundred for the last three years. It's not even... Any questions? Library. So library came in with a large budget, and we asked them to go back. They came back with seventy six, three forty eight, which we talked about last meeting. I thought they, the changes were pretty reasonable. It is an increase of about, we're a little under four thousand dollars a year over here.
And if we take the groundskeeping out, it's now the seventy three, one thirty four, which is what, three hundred, four, five hundred dollars increase?
Uh, yeah. So, yeah, so we'll adjust that line to reflect the movement. Hold on, just wanted to make sure.
It's thirty two, fourteen.
Thirty two, fourteen. Sorry, just...
It's like, you know, seventy three, one thirty four without the groundskeeping.
Here, sorry. Sorry. I'm trying. I'm trying to shoot my line there. Mine is thirty two, fourteen.
Seventy three, one thirty six.
One thirty four, yep. Great. All right, sorry about that. Any other changes to the ladder? Nope. Patriotic, these are the flags that we put on the gray signs here in town for their entrance. I haven't had all of the questions about that. Celebration, you know, they had to, came in, made requests for increases to ninety two, ninety. Most of that's coming towards the increases until the month seventy fifth. Any questions about that?
Just touching base on that, so twenty two, we had a five thousand, five K warrant article. Twenty three, you had a five K warrant article. Now, they are going to put forth a five K warrant for this year.
I don't know. Are they putting five K? Again, I'm assuming you'll come forward with that. I have not seen that order. But for the operating budget, it's ninety two, ninety, before we get into, we haven't gotten to that. Conservation, forty three, fifty, no change, along with a five dollar in the other line, which is just a basically placeholder line for conservation. We've done that in the past. I see no reason why to keep it. Debt service line, forgive me, Sue's been out. I meant to get the specific number here. It's going to be something, by my calculation, something approximately sixty six, eight hundred. We'll get the specific line item.
That's where fucking the next year.
Principal A.
This year for, maybe in three years, this is issue responsible.
This year, in twenty twenty four, principal A is going to be payments on the issues to follow. It'll be around sixty six, eight hundred. We'll get, we'll get the specific number before the budget hearing, guys. All right, so we okay so far? All right, so let's now get into more controversial issues, shall we? First one up, I'll, let's do mosquitoes, pest control. Last year, this was zeroed out of the operating budget. We had a warrant article on it last year. We'd allow the town to vote on it. Let me just keep that specific. Twenty twenty three warrants, there was a warrant line for the larva side of eighteen thousand dollars. Again, right now, without any substantial changes here, our operating budget is, without even including, I'll put it in first. Let's put it in, put this back in, spreadsheet. So without any changes to the items that we're covering, kind of covering right now, we are already a nine percent increase in our operating budget. I think we need to find areas to reduce that, which is why I've saved these items for the end, because these are areas where I think we can find savings. There are also controversial items in town, I know that. Most of the changes and increases that we've already walked through, most of the substantial ones deal with personnel. So unless we are going to basically get rid of people, which...
We don't have a lot of people.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of people, and I don't recommend that we do that. You know, the other things are contracts for services of things that we need. We need computer services, we have to have an appraiser, which we put out for contract. I don't see a whole lot of other areas right now, after we've walked through all this, than the ones that I'm going to raise. So with that, pest control. We did eighteen thousand dollars here after the warrant article. My preference right now, my recommendations, to zero this out. We could do a warrant article, or if somebody in town wants to write in a warrant article, we certainly have the option of a select quarter proposing a warrant article, but we don't have to. I think we should zero this out. I, I, I think the town knows where I stand on this. I've been saying this for fifteen years. Any comments?
Who's voted in or?
Oh, I don't, I don't recall. And again, I will note, changes can be made at deliberative session if the attendees at deliberative session want to put it back in. I would rather go before this town at a budget hearing with a budget that is not an eight point nine percent increase. This is one area where I think it is possible to find savings. If the town wants to vote it back in, they can vote it back in. I just have a hard time proposing a budget with a nine percent increase in current progress.
Do we know what the increase was from the year prior to this year?
It was seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty was in the operating budget prior to twenty twenty three. Eighteen thousand dollars last year.
No, I'm saying the overall, I mean, there's a nine percent operating budget increase right now.
The operating budget?
Year to year.
The, the overall operating budget last year was one nine six three, two two eight.
And we saw an eight percent increase in twenty three.
Correct.
So that was an eight percent last year?
Yeah.
And now we're looking at nine already?
Without, without, in terms of what we've approved in the status quo on trash recycling, health agencies, and pest control, and those are the three items of health at the end here, because it's going to be the most common. Yeah.
Did you say that this was voted in in warrant article last year?
It was on the warrant last year. I don't know, I don't recall what the vote was. Oh, okay, great, great.
Two forty three percent.
Thank you, I appreciate you looking at it. I couldn't remember if it was defeated or not. I didn't think that we spent, we spent money on the permit, because we did that proactively, because we had to. If the town was going to vote for it, we had to do the permit. So, so, okay, great, thank you. Chris Griffin, appreciate you looking at it. So, yeah, so we need you to do it, guys.
I'll support if the town wants it in, if it's a group, it's on the warrant article. Going flat on the budget.
So in terms of proposed budget, we'll zero the line for now. Okay, great. All right, number two, health agencies. The health agency line is forty seven, fifty. We had that last year from the seventy five, no, we, less than half.
I'm sorry, say it again.
The health agency budget in twenty twenty two was seventy five hundred. We brought that down to forty seven, fifty last year. The health agency line is basically, we collect taxes from everybody, and then we, as a board, work through and provide contributions to a variety of nonprofit agencies. We talked about this last year. My position for years on this is still the same. I don't like the fact that we collect other people's money to give away to other people. I understand the argument that, you know, we're supporting agencies that are active in the town. I, I just, I just have a problem with the concept. People in town want to support these agencies, I'm all for it. Especially in the current budget environment. I'd rather not collect these people's money and give away. I don't think that's what we should be doing. That's my opinion. I'd like to zero this one.
What are the agencies?
These are things like CASA, Ready Rides, Crossroads, there's about, I don't know.
Eight oh, eight oh nine.
Yeah, we fund about eight oh nine, we get requests from about fifteen or something. This is nothing against what they do. Again, philosophically, I just, I'd rather give, personally, I'd rather give my money directly to organizations.
What's the line out?
Forty seven, fifty. It used to be seventy five hundred last year, we cut it down to forty seven, fifty. I'm proposing we zero it.
So if we drop that with your proposal there for forty seven, fifty, zero, what percentage is that going to drop? Something over four?
Uh, something like that, hold on. Just going to zero it out. It's about point three.
As much as I can appreciate your position, I think it's important for us to kind of support some of these organizations, especially some of the biopolitans and transnational consumers. I would be amenable to staying at forty five hundred for that number.
Forty seven, fifty.
Yeah, we'll stay at forty four, forty five hundred.
Mike?
Yeah, I can, I can see forty five hundred. I can see where, you know, they definitely provide for the town and, you know, it's not, it's not a fee.
Point three, but I mean, yeah, I can see forty five hundred.
All right, we'll put it at forty five hundred. All right, now for the big one. Trash and recycling. So before I address those, let me just sort out. We have a eight thousand, thirty seven dollar fee that we pay in Newmarket for access to the transfer station. Transfer station, to provide town access to the transfer. I'm not proposing we change that. To continue to have town access to the transportation. People use that for variety of things. They bring trash up there, they'll bring construction debris from, you know, swapping out a cabinet in their, in their house, whatever it is. You know, they'll pay a fee up there to do the dumping, but, and some things are for free. You know, you can drop some stuff there for free. I see no reason to change that fee. The second item on that I want to raise is, we do the annual, basically, dump day down at the water department. Costs anywhere between three and five thousand dollars, depending on how much.
I think it was more than this year because of the...
Forty five hundred dollars, I think. Used to, the year before was really low, because nobody showed up.
We got, we got hit this year on a higher cost of this one. Control mattresses anyway, doesn't make any sense, because the question is, oh, in there. But turnkey gets a real issue with mattresses, they don't make throwaways. So that's why, that's why we got hammered.
Well, I'll say this, turnout for the last two years has actually been quite low. There are a handful of people who make multiple trips, and there's probably another thirty, other thirty five other people who showed up this year. I don't know why, I don't know if people in town just don't have the stuff that they were lying around. I think we go a year without, I don't think it's that big a deal to take a year off. Again, we're looking for every dime we can. To me, this is a place to find forty five hundred dollars.
New markets are available.
New markets always available. It's just that we were providing the service in a sense to free, for free, to everybody via their taxes. If somebody wants to get rid of mattress now, they can't wait for town day if we zero this, they'll just have to take it to Newmarket and, and, you know, pay twenty bucks and dump it there. So I raise this as zeroing out the annual trash.
Can you even get that number to what it was this year? Can you access it?
Actually, it should be right here.
It's over there.
Yeah, hold on a minute. Did you get ready? Excuse me, it's right here.
So, I thought I had it.
I think it was, the year before it was thirteen, it was like, I'm going to say fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars. This year is...
Forty four, seventy two.
Thank you.
What was it? Four thousand, four hundred seventy two.
Yeah, forty five hundred dollars, yep. So, yeah, I think we should zero it.
I'll score that. I'm a multi user.
You are. How is he going to match you up? Does not get right.
I'm like three truckloads of years, that's about.
I was not doing this when I was speaking on that ladder. Let me just point that out. Are you okay with zeroing this? Again, all of these numbers are fungible, and this is what we're going to propose to the town. So you good with that? Great, all right. Now, for the real...
We need to tell them why.
Would you like me to make a phone call?
I thought you told me you weren't scared of it.
All right, waste man. This is, you know, the once in a future issue that we always see. By the current tonnage that we have for both municipal waste and, so we do something under almost six hundred tons of municipal waste a year. Our recycling runs about a hundred and twenty tons. Again, these are give and take, I'm just giving you some general numbers to work with. Cardboard, we do about a ton a week of cardboard. I'll tell you, people love putting cardboard in that day. We do about fifty two, basically a ton a week, call it fifty two tons a year on cardboard. Under our current cost structure for municipal waste collection for next year, that will run eighty one thousand, eight hundred eighty five dollars. That's in our contract with ELLM for collection, collection fee for next year. The tipping fee on a per ton basis is going to run eighty one dollars next year at turnkey. So our tipping costs, assuming six hundred tons of waste, is going to be forty eight thousand dollars, forty eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Our collection fee for recycle under the current contract, which expires soon, is forty nine thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars. Now, we can renew, we can re-up that contract if it's on, but this is the numbers if we continue recycling the way we do. Forty nine thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars. And it's going to be about a hundred and thirty five dollars a ton for recycling paper, which will total sixteen thousand, two hundred. All right. So when you look at those numbers and you look at the cost per tons of what we're doing for trash, hold on, we're running about two hundred and twenty dollars a ton for our municipal waste. We're running five hundred, almost five hundred and seventy dollars a ton for recycling.
See that?
Five hundred and seventy dollars a ton for recycling. Now, I don't want to run through the history of the discussions about recycling, but the reality is, in this day, with the changes that have gone on the recycling market, not a whole lot of stuff gets recycled. It goes to a recycling company. But if anybody thinks that what they're putting in that blue bin is all getting recycled, it's not. Most of the plastic doesn't get recycled. It's really only, as I think somebody raised last time, twos and fives get recycled. It's just, it's not cost effective. Metal gets recycled, sure, glass does not get recycled. Paper has a hard time recycling. Cardboard gets recycled, but we're doing this effort anyways. So I, I talked to our current provider at ELLM, Jim at ELLM, and talked to him about what are the options for us to look at different collections? And there's basically what I'll call four options. We basically keep the status quo. Under the numbers that I described, the status quo will cost us a hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars next year. We could do, combine everything into municipal solid waste. Basically, it all goes out as trash. Cardboard gets out as trash, recycling goes out as trash. It all goes as trash. If people want to recycle, they can certainly take it up to Newmarket. Right? And they do cardboard collection there as well. It is an option. I have no idea how much would get taken or would not get taken up there. So I'm gonna assume nothing gets taken up there. But under that, it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars as if we just collected everything into municipal waste. So we're talking about saving twenty-six thousand dollars. Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand. We could do every other week recycling. Our municipal waste would still be collected as normal every week. Recycling would be collected every other week. By that math, it would still cost us a hundred, I call it a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars under that scenario. And lastly, the option I asked him to look at was if we basically get rid of recycling and just have municipal waste, but we continue to do cardboard collection, oh, I'm sorry. Every other week recycling, we keep doing cardboard collection. And he charges twenty-six hundred dollars for the year to do the cardboard collection under the every other week recycling. Sorry. But that's already incorporated into the one seventy-nine. The last one is if we basically get rid of recycling, just do municipal waste, and we keep the cardboard here, because cardboard is heavyweight, they can do that. The cardboard alone would cost us fifty-two hundred. But the total, all total, cardboard collection and municipal waste would be one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. That's thirty-three thousand dollars we would be saving. For me, this is the biggest line item savings that I can find in this budget. And it's still, if we go this route, would still be quite extensive in the net budget numbers. So I'm sitting here going, well, what do we want to do? I'll open it up for discussion. My inclination is, look, where they keep the transfer station open at Newmarket, where anybody who wants to recycle can go up there and recycle. We basically move towards municipal waste and we keep the cardboard collection. At fifty-two hundred, it's totally worth it for us to have that collected as a separate item. And again, that's actually, that's actually a real recycle. That stuff gets recycled. So my recommendation is to go to the, go to that type of structure for the next year. Open it up for discussion on the board and then I'll open it up for the public as well.
So... I did not, too much of it, and I apologize for not doing so. Did not get a chance to review the contract with Lampert or Turnkey as far as the combination, combining all into one and pumping up the kind of numbers that we can bring in up there. So that's an open question in my mind this time, whether there's any penalty curve or additional. We're gonna go with your hypothetical, Mike, for another hundred and twenty tons of recycling. Whether there's any impact coming from Turnkey towards us on that?
Well, let me just say on that point, we got rid of recycling for a year. We didn't have a problem at turnkey. It's not like we'll be doing something that we've never done.
Understand, but we did just sign a new contract and I did not have the opportunity to get on. I apologize for not getting that for that. To see whether there's any ramifications or consequences of the contract and what impact is on that.
Understood, but what we, the new part that we signed with Turnkey didn't actually alter the collection terms. It altered the fee. That's why our fee next year is actually eighty-one. It was actually originally scheduled, I think, somewhere around seventy-eight.
This, twenty-three was seventy-eight, eighty-one for issue, eighty-four for twenty-five.
Yep. It was, yeah, it was a fee change. The contract was a fee schedule change. It wasn't a services change.
Understand, but I have not read that in detail to ensure that that's the case. So I had to show. With your proposal here now, where he has to jump to pick up another hundred and twenty tons. And the impact on that is, so I did some phone calls around the state. I talked to a couple of other towns and heard this. And one of the things that they, you're never gonna make money on recycling. There's no money in it. You're not gonna recover any of your cost assets. All you can do is mitigate your costs on it. And one of the towns I talked to, they're getting two cents a ton for plastic. And the biggest thing that they found, that they saved their money on the recycling was is reducing the number of truckloads and the trips. Not the tipping fees, because the tipping fees are already been constant. But what it says is reducing on trips that are having made by the owners. Which reduces not only their overhead, but their expenses almost, et cetera. Yeah, it would be great if recycling was the solution to everything that was put forward to us all these years ago, such as plastic, we recycle everything, which is turned out to be the biggest holes. And you look at plastic, what's it, ones, twos, and fives? Yeah, ones and twos recycled. So you buy something from Home Depot, you get six liters of plastic that you can't get apart without slicing your finger with it. And you can't do anything with it. So it's a scam in itself and then we... I'm just gonna go off on soapbox here. You know, so we've got all this plastic bags and we go from the grocery store, we can't get anything, we sit in the landfill. Nobody uses paper bags. We talked to Jim last year, we went from requiring fifty-gallon, sixty-gallon, eighty-gallon contractor bags and sit in the landfill for a hundred years. And you gotta, so now you just put your trash in and it doesn't have to be bagged in that sense. I'm hesitant to combine it all into one. I kinda have an inkling that I like the area of the weekly recycling. That strikes me as a favorable approach. It will take some education from the population to do so. As an example, what we've done is we put out, we have a large fifty-gallon can and put that out every three weeks. And that covers our recycling, which didn't do a little bad deal. But that's just a personal thing. I appreciate your trying to save the money on that. But if we can save eighteen to twenty thousand, like going to every other week, we would be dealing, and not saying that I really care if Jimmy jumps off the roof if I'm not doing it. The only town in Southeast part of the state that does recycling. And I think there's almost an imperative of trying to, which you can recycle to a degree. I don't know the solution. I don't have the answers. I'm hesitant to throw it all in one file. Ideally, I'd like to see, just take it down and turn it in, burn it for energy, electricity, and burn it for energy. You know, if we bail out of Turnkey, then we're locked out for three years. Just throwing these points out of this discussion and I don't know where I'm going with it. Really, yeah, I don't really know where I'm going with this because it's one of those conundrums. So I'm curious to hear what you have to say, Mike, and then hear what everybody else has to say.
So, you know, I'm just thinking this practically. You know, if my son misses bringing out the garbage for one week, that's staying in the house another week. Right? I mean, we go every other week with recycling. Now that's four weeks, that recycling's gonna stay in your house and miss the day or on vacation or whatever it is. So, I mean, that, you know. I'm not sure. You know, again, I don't know what the answer is either. I do know, you know, thinking this through from what we went through a few years ago with, with the study that was done and the passion people had in this town for the recycling to happen. You know, what are we looking at again here in the spring? Right? When we, when this is presented? And how, and how do we think that's gonna, how do we think that's gonna play out? I mean, I, you know, I'm just really interested to see what the rest of the town's thoughts are on it. I mean, I don't have an answer for this either. So.
And one of the things I'll destroy in this, so we're spending all this money. We're looking, even if we drop this down to an eight percent budget increase, that's two years ago, eight percent. And we do have folks, a lot of folks on fixed incomes. We're the seventh, I think, now, eighth richest town in the state of New York. And we got a lot of people and a lot of money and it's not been given. But we've got folks that are struggling, putting them on the table, that should be for kids. Fixed income retirees, and we have a responsibility to them as well. Some folks have said, I'll drop another five hundred bucks a year, I don't care. Well, a lot of people will head five hundred bucks a year and drop it. And I don't have the answer, but these are the pushes that I'm getting from folks when they're calling me or they're emailing me about this stuff. They're pulling that up for input and thoughts. And trying to balance, how do we maintain our tax bill? Again, emails from folks saying, I've lived in this town sixty-five years. My tax bill is one of thirty-seven hundred dollars. I can't, I don't know how I'm gonna pay it. You know? And then you have folks that are averaging two hundred and fifty thousand a year. You go, okay, that's not fair. And that's the conundrum we're in here as a town. How do we address this? How do we solve this? And then how do we involve, also, the social objectives that's very strong in this town, I would say?
Well, again, wait, but wait a minute. The option for recycling will still exist for everybody in this town. If they want to recycle, we're gonna require them to drive up to the Newmarket transfer station. It's not like we're not providing a recycling option. What we're saying here is we can't justify paying five hundred and fifty dollars a ton for something that, you know, mostly doesn't get recycled. And yes, we'll make sure that there are options available to you if you want to recycle. But anything you put at the street is gonna go into the municipal trash. You wanna recycle, great. Take it up to Newmarket. We'll still do the cardboard here at Town Hall. But the recycling, anybody who wants to recycle can go to Newmarket today.
Right, I think that's something we can afford at virtue signal. We just don't have a budget. I think that's a lot of motivation for the, maybe the last election we can have.
On that note, we'll open it up to the... Josh, I'm here.
Forty-five all over the road. First of all, thanks for saving the best for the last. Yeah, after hearing about the budget discussion, just like we're last meeting, I did reach out to Jim and Al to discuss what the options are. So firstly, aside, Jim says Newfield has some of the best recycling it's seen. So we do a really good job of putting right things in the bin, low contamination. So pound in the back for everybody out there. All of the recycling mostly goes to Greenworks, which is in Route One and T Street. You drive by, it has those big bottles up front. So on the question, does it actually get recycled? It goes to Greenworks. They make the decision. And Newfield's done a good job of giving Greenworks the best stuff to use. So that's all I know about that. Just to clarify one point too, that we keep talking about ones and fives and twos and fives. It's just ones and twos.
A one's a two, a five's a five. I understand.
One's a two.
One's a two, thank you.
But I guess one question is, we introduce, reintroduce recycling on a warrant article. Can it only be removed via warrant article? Is that a rule?
We have a contract. Contract expires. We're under no obligation to renew the contract. That's not a requirement of our.
I mean, personally, I am fine with everybody. I do that anyway, really. I got six bins and they all fill up. That's great for bringing the end of the driveway, which is easier for me not to go there. You mentioned virtue signaling. From my standpoint, it's, it's almost un-American to litter. Landfills are really organized littering. We fought too hard for the country to take trash, put it in a spot, and let it sit. Let's boil this down to, if this was just your lot, your land, if there's nothing else, you've got the choice of dumping it in the corner of your yard or you have the choice to recycle, to get rid of it, even that, that's a cost. You would probably, if you're cycling, get rid of it instead of having this big trash pile. That's my personal view of it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
So for the past year, the library has been collecting plastic to make, or the garden, I guess.
Right, for the benches.
For the benches.
Yep.
They, they gather enough plastic to make two benches. They're just continuing that now for time being because there's no need for benches. I happened to be dropping a bag off the other day when the woman who collects it was there and I was asking her about it. And she said that Shaw's, Hannah Hertz, and Market Basket all collect that plastic. Now, I'm not talking about plastic bottles. We all can use reusable bottles. I don't think water should be bottled, but that's my personal opinion. They don't collect milk dugs, juice containers, that kind of plastic. But film, plastic film that comes on packaging, plastic bags, your wood pellet bags. I mean, there's a lot of plastic that you can put into a bag and just bring it to Shaw's, Hannah Hertz, Market Basket on a weekly basis when you go to do your grocery shopping. I'm just throwing that out there.
No, thank you.
And it might be worth it for the next newsletter to have something, you know, a little snippet written in there about that because I didn't, I had no idea. I thought the shopping centers were only recycling the grocery bins.
Oh, right.
And it's not. It's a lot more than that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Yeah, Chris?
Yeah, I guess my big issue with removing recycling is that less than two years ago, the people in town voted overwhelmingly to be in state recycling. So I think it would be important to keep it as a service to the town because that's what people want.
And again, I'm saying that the issue that we're addressing here is what are we gonna put on the budget line in order to bring a budget before the town? The town wants to change that, it will have the opportunity to deliver it essentially. Somebody wants to do a warrant article, there's an opportunity to do that. The final decision is though, is going to be to the town board. We have to put together a budget. I have a real problem with proposing a budget with another eight percent increase on top of the eight percent that we did last year. There's not a lot of places that we can find ways to bring that down to what I would say is a more reasonable budget increase. This is one of the few games.
So taking away recycling altogether, keeping the Newmarket option reduces the budget by thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Or increases it by twenty?
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Eighteen.
About half the amount. It's, I'm sorry, it's thirty-three, one sixty-three, nine forty-five. I apologize. My computer went down. Was it one sixty-three, nine forty-five?
One sixty, and a new sixty-four K for motorcycle plus.
Yeah, so it's about thirty-two thousand versus eighteen.
Okay, and then for your budget increase, where is the counter?
I apologize. My battery went on my laptop. I had it all in one spreadsheet. It's probably about two plus percent, two and a half percent.
For the thirty-two.
Yeah, for the thirty-two. I'm estimating here in my head.
So if we, if we preference early, we'll just roll nine.
Nine, yeah. This gets us down to...
If we did it down, we'll probably seven, one, nine, or eight percent if we remove.
Well, no, because we, again, without mosquito control, without pest control, without the trash day. And with the change I'm talking about here, I think we get it down to something on the order of four, five percent. Again, I apologize. Yeah.
Do you have a percentage of how much of the recycling actually gets recycled?
So, no. As Josh pointed out, it goes to Greenworks. What happens at that point, I mean, even Jim didn't know. He's like, I couldn't tell you. You probably had the same conversation as I did. I can tell you nationally, you know, New York Times and the Washington Post have repeated the same thing. Less than ten percent of plastics nationally get recycled. Almost no paper. Cardboard gets recycled, but the paper itself, for the most part, you know, going through those processing... but the paper itself, for the most part, you know, going through those processing facilities, they don't get a whole lot.
So I'm just saying, not against recycling, I'm off course, but it is not being recycled. To me, that's what the virtue signaling comes in when you're such a, a heated movement towards it, and it's not even happening.
No, understood. Again, in my opinion, people who really want to recycle, we're still providing an option for them to do it. I don't want to spend thirty-two thousand dollars to mandate that we're going to continue to spend five hundred and fifty dollars a ton for what gets put out of there. To me, in a current budget environment, I have a hard time justifying that. It's not that we're not providing an option. It's not like we're saying, no, you can't recycle in this town. We are providing the option. If we go, in my recommendation, if we go to municipal solid waste plus cardboard here. And to me, it's the most cost effective, still providing an option to people. To me, it is, in my opinion, is the most justifiable in the current department. So, we've got to choose a number.
Hang on, let's go read that. So if we did every other week, we'd be talking a hundred thirteen, also a hundred fourteen K here, exactly.
If we did it, what, every other week?
Recycling.
Well, recycling every other week with trash collection, every week, is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Correct.
Five hundred and thirty-five.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Municipal collection every week, cardboard pickup, and recycling every other week is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
So I say eighty-one, eighty-five for mainstream solid waste per contract, and then twenty-nine, two fifty for recycling collection.
Yeah, but the tipping.
Then we got to get tipping.
Yeah. I can tell you, again, I apologize. The difference is from a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five thirty-five.
Eighty-one for waste.
Eighty-one.
Fifty-five.
Correct.
So eighty-one K.
No, eighty-one per ton.
Eighty-one per ton.
One thirty-five per ton for recycling. I can tell you the bottom line for the every other, every other recycling week, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Assuming we continue the cardboard at twenty-six hundred.
What is a tipping fee?
So, they collect it, but there's a fixed fee for them to drive around town and pick it up. Then they drive it up to Turkey, or as Josh pointed out, to Greenworks down in Massachusetts. And they basically take the truck, drive it up to a set of scales, they weigh it, and based upon the tonnage, they pay, and then we pay whatever tonnage it costs to tip it at that location. It's called a tipping fee. So tipping getting into a landfill, or tipping it at Greenworks, the tipping fee is typically done on a per-ton basis. That's how we pay.
Do we have receipts for those?
Yes. We have receipts from Turkey, we have receipts from Elm for the Greenworks. Because they pay that directly, and then they pass it off.
See, two cents a match for the year, so the first time they look at it, you know, why would they elaborate that? So what is the impact going to be on, is there going to be that threat of Jim, where Elm wants to re- negotiate the contract, reopen the contract, which is funded up term?
No, he, again, my discussions with him was, if we go this route, this is the numbers. If we go that route, that's the numbers. These are the numbers that he's, he's already said, these will be the numbers if you go into these options. Sounds like he had the same conversation with you, Josh. Nobody said our name was Page, Sheriff, is he?
It's not like it's something that can't be re-added.
Correct.
Back to the budget.
Indeliberately, yep. You are absolutely correct.
But for this year's budgeting purposes, it's like if you take two vacations a year, and you can't afford to take two, you take one because of your budget.
Once a week.
That's where I'm at, Hoby. Where I'm at.
Can I do break for second one song?
One, option wasn't discussed with Jim. I have no idea. I have no idea. I mean, we can certainly discuss with him before deliberative, but I have no idea if that's an option.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, so since you're asked for a month, and you missed it.
Well, actually, Mike, that's a, it's a great. No, that's, that's an excellent point.
I don't think it's any page I'm having time, my son misses a great.
Because at Mike's house, he didn't want to come.
Then he misses the keys to the car. Oh, you're missing recycling, or you're missing.
We're bringing it on to Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah. It really is a good site.
Oh, man. Look, I'll make the recommendation, we put the one sixty-three, nine forty-five. There's going to be a long discussion about this at deliberative. I try to go in there with a budget I'm comfortable with. I'm comfortable with a low budget right now. So I'll throw that on the tables, the recommendation.
What was the number?
One sixty-three, nine forty-five, I believe is the number.
And what's that take us down to?
Again, I'd love to tell you, but I can't.
Ballpark percentage increase.
I'm ballparking it, I think it's somewhere around four to five percent. With the other stuff that we've already incorporated. I think it's in that ballpark.
And emphasizing again, recycling is available at Newmarket.
You bet.
And it's available to discuss at the ward.
At the deliberative.
At deliberative session, it can be drawn up, and across, and the town can make a determination at that point where they want to go.
Yep.
And does it include the cardboard, fifty-two hundred?
Correct, correct. It's still be equal cardboard work, correct.
Talking to Jim, the cardboard has started to increase. It was up to one forty-five a couple of years, a year and a half ago. Now it's starting to work its way back up. He said they had bills and tons, because the way this line is starting to be logging.
Oh, price wise, yeah. Yeah, again, cardboard absolutely gets recycled. I see no reason to get rid of that. I think it's effective. Believe me, that's cost effective for us.
I'm willing to go in that direction with the contingency that we canceled the recycling, we have a Newmarket option, and it's available to address at deliberative.
Yep.
And the town can make their decision on the way they want to go. I think we're making the big picture across the board, trying to maintain this responsibility for the town. Hell, I'm going to throw recycling everything we could, but all this crap is not recyclable anyway, and get that out of the street, and I made choices of that. But I think our first responsibility is to make it sure people pay their bills, pay their taxes, and eat their ounces. And then if the community decides they want it otherwise, I'll support it.
All right, we'll put that number in then. I don't think there's any of the budget line items that we have to look at tonight, unless you guys have any, if you know, anything you missed. Okay. Oh, before I forget. In my conversation with Jim, actually, Josh, I'm glad, I looked at you, and I think Jim, I'm glad. So, one of the things I talked to Jim about, and this is more of a town policy issue, which I think I'm going to recommend we adopt. So, I know, Hoby, that you traveled around town with him the other week.
Spend one night walking around, see if you're driving around, and watching everything.
So, one of the things Jim mentioned to me in my conversation with him is...